It is 10 o'clock, Mr. Manager.
Ready for you, sir. Thank you. Good morning, Vice Chair and Commission. This is the agenda review for Wednesday, January 10.
Oh. First of all, we'll get you.
Let's stand by just for one second.
It's okay.
Thanks.
Well, I'm here today and Tanya is going to do new business. Well, we'll go ahead and.
It's okay.
I'm sure we can talk about something else for a minute. I'll add that on my list of things to do on Friday mornings. No copies of the agenda for the commissions. Yeah. And are you doing a new business? All right. County this. I'll start there and we'll get you guys copied before we get into the guts of this.
I'm gonna go. Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. For county announcements next week, we're going to hit on Martin Luther King closure. And then the election sticker contest. And then Julie Stimson with emergency management will come and talk about the civic ready and Sedgwick County Regional hazmat survey.
Should have lasted longer. Okay. Let's go out of sequence here because this is the agenda where we elect new leadership on the commission. So let me have Justin just kind of go over. And this is actually the second item of new business. When you get the agendas in front of you, you'll see that. Let me have Justin just kind of talk through the process there and then he'll do this again next week to refresh your memory, but.
Thanks. Yeah, the, and this is how it was done last year as well, but. There, by statute, there's a requirement that you would elect a chair each year. And so the, the process for that would be to open it to all commissioners being eligible for nominations and to make nominations wouldn't require a second to be nominated. We close nominations and there's more than one commissioner who've been nominated for the chair position. Then what we would intend to do is have a paper ballot where each commissioner's name would be listed and it would vote for one of the commissioners who's been nominated. And then if, you know, once, once a chair has been selected, then the same process would be used for the chair pro temp position. I, I, any questions on that at this point?
Now, just a clarification that in case the public's wondering, we will read the, the person that voted and who they voted for.
That's correct.
So there's a total, total transparency in who's, who we're voting for.
That's correct. The, the, because we couldn't do it the other, we couldn't have it to where it's, it's anonymous as to how you voted. It's just a way that we've done it through the voting so that all the commissioners are essentially voting at the same time.
And that'll happen for the chair and then for the, and then for the vice chair pro temp position.
That's correct. Any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez is on Zoom. I know the chairman is not going to be on Zoom, but.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Well, reading for our agendas.
Thank you.
Okay. Under appointments, we have a resignation on a, on a cab board. That's item A. Item B and C are both sheriff civil service appointments. I think one is a reappointment, one's a new appointment. Then.
Item A, he's going to push that back. He's asked for me to delay that for at least to the next meeting.
Very good. We'll remove that.
Please, yeah, push that back, please.
Okay. Under new business, and we call new business part one, because what Justin went over is new business part two. New business part one, item D is the chairman's award. Item E, we have talked about with you individually, we're going to adjust sheriff compensation. This is the discussion, the public discussion and vote for that. And I believe it goes into effect on. Twenty first, I believe. Right? Okay. But you'll, you will debate it and vote on it next week. And if you approve, it will go into effect on January 21. Jean, anything else on that that I missed?
No, nothing else. That's correct.
Item F will be Tanya talking about the joint legislative platform. I think you've seen drafts of that. And she will talk about that and we'll vote on that Wednesday then. City is ready on there.
As far as I know, yes, everything's been sent around to you all.
And then item G is board of bid and contracts. Commissioner Dennis, you had some questions on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I did look through it. I think the last item on the agenda, on the bids and contracts and some vaccines. And some of those vaccines over $2,000 for purchase, other ones are $1,500. So I'm just curious if. Who do we give those to? And do we charge for them or? What's the process when the vaccine is that expensive?
Very good. Adrian, Adrian is on Zoom. Adrian, could you hear the question? You've got her muted. Hold on.
Sorry. Yes. So I'm not totally sure which one you're referring to at this time, but if they're travel vaccines, they can be very expensive and they are for adults and they are in their private pay. Now, we do have, I think the RSV may have been, I don't know if that was one of the ones on there. And that's, those are over like $500. And so unless someone has insurance, it's going to be difficult for them to pay for that. But they're really expensive ones. If they're travel shots, it's, there's no sliding scale. And if, you know, their insurance either pays for them or they pay out of pocket. Oftentimes it's related to a church. Going to a different country and the church picks up that, that fee. But we pretty much give it at what our cost is and we're able to get discounted, believe it or not, you know, preferred pricing through these vendors.
But what we are doing is we charge the, the person that is getting the shot to the one that's over $2,000 is for RSV. I looked it up because I couldn't figure out what was. So do we charge patients for that?
Well, if, if the state is able to give us vaccine for those that are uninsured, then that would be on a sliding scale that would go down to like a dollar. But if it's not on a program that the, the state is able to help support, then. Unless the insurance company pays for it. And I didn't realize that one of them was $2,000. I know that one of the RSVs 500.
For dose, it's like 500, but the vial is $2,000. It's everywhere it looks. And I'm not an expert on medical at all. Just trying to read what the chart is. The way it read to me was with the vial cost so much, but the dose is like $500.
Yes. It's, it is, it is outrageous. And that was our concern because of the amount of. Publicity that these were being given and, and really recommending people get these vaccines. That unless they were eligible for them through their provider, that the insurance would cover it because of being over 65 or having chronic, chronic conditions. Unless they were on Medicare and insurance and again, were referred by their physician, then they weren't going to pay for it.
But.
And not able to give those on a, on a sliding scale.
How many of these $500 shots do we give? Who we give it to?
We have given very few. We also have the antibody for infants and have given very few. And I can get those actual numbers for you.
And Commissioner, I'd point out it just because a vaccine is on that list doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to provide it. That, that's a pricing sheet for that. And what that contract does is box in purchase price for us to be able to get those vaccines. We may not give any of a particular vaccine in the course of a year.
Okay. The other half of that question, that's, and I keep getting corrected by our legal on whether it's single source or sole source or what it is. Doesn't make any much difference, but this is one or the other. So I still don't quite understand why we have to do these. If there's a possibility, we could get it cheaper by bidding.
There are a number of different vaccine providers and we are utilizing this contract because it's a good rate for this particular brand. But there are other, that's not the only contract we use to purchase vaccines. And I know that staff, as they're, they're filling the supply room, they look at all the different vendors to see who's the most cost effective when they order vaccines.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Dennis. I'd like to ask a couple of other questions. Again, this goes back to. A conversation we've had a couple of years ago on travel vaccines. I would like to know if we are ordering this, how much of these expire, so to speak, and they're not being utilized? In other words, we, if we go back over some period of time and say. We bought, again, I, just to make clear, some of these that it looks like they're over $2,000, they, it looks like they divide out by five. So there's five doses per vial, it looks like to me. And the most expensive one out here is about $417 per dose or $2,085 per vial. So if you buy a vial, that's probably how you buy it, and you only give one or two vaccines, then you're wasting three because they expire. That, I would like to know that. I'd like to know some history on how much we're wasting, so to speak.
We'll have to do some research.
My argument years ago was there was, there was private sector interested in providing these travel vaccines. I think the argument was we would stock it and they would have to order it. And so it was more expedient for us to. Use our supply because it was on hand rather than the private sector would have to order that. And it might take some time for that to show up. And maybe be slightly more expensive, but, but the, but the community does have access to these vaccines. If they work with their providers, they can get it. They just have to think ahead and plan ahead. So my, my intent at the time was not to do these at all. I think we should focus on. Our local communicable diseases, things that we, every citizen in Central County should have. Travel vaccines that you might need to have when you travel abroad. It's a, it's a choice to travel. You should plan ahead. It's my personal opinion. I would rather not do these. If there's a way to bifurcate this list, I probably go against part of this if I had a chance. Thank you. Any other questions on that? All right. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman. We got through the agenda, I think, pretty well. Is there anything else else we have to talk about on this?
Uh, we're going to go through consent real quickly if you, if you want to. Consent items H and I are both easements. Lynn is here. One, they're a little bit unusual. One's a site distance easement. The other is a floodway reserve easement. Lynn's here to, can just give you a quick overview of that and we'll go on.
So on item H, it is a site distance easement for three lots within Blue Stem Estates in District Five. Basically, what we have is three locations in that subdivision that have 90 degree turns. And we actually require those lots to give up a triangle in the corner that they can know, can't have shrubs or fence or any kind, anything to block the site of those corners. So that is what item H is. And then item I is actually not unusual, but. That was a plat of land that previously had a flood easement, flood reserve easement on it. The plat wipes that easement out. So this is a new easement. It is part of the plat that is based on. The current FEMA flood plan approved mapping that's associated with Jester Creek.
But I do have some questions then. For example, the site distance covenant, I understand why we would need that, but that wasn't part of the plat when we platted that corner?
Yes, it was required. Did they provide that as part of the plat? However, we, the site distance easement and covenant is, covenants are required to be approved and then filed with registered deeds so that the covenant doesn't run with the land. So it's a required addition.
Part of the plat, we don't have to pay for that. So there's no cost to either one of these.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Item J and Scott's here. I think it's a non-contested conditionally use request for an accessory apartment. Correct? Scott, uncontested?
Yes.
Okay. K and L are aging. Service contracts. Item K is for in-home and community service on item L is for physical disability programs. There is, this is in your backup materials pages 193 through 298. So it's 105 pages of contracts. The various providers, one is seven, one is 10. Tim, you can answer any questions if you have questions. And as far as I, we do this every year. Correct? And then the, most of the rest of this agenda, M, N, O, P and Q are money transfers. And I want Lindsay to talk real high level about that and specifically focus on item O, which you all got an email from Lauren on. We have visited with all of you. EMS is here today. Chief is here for his acquisition of two ambulances, which is part of item O. And then we had talked about two SUV type vehicles or command vehicles. And I want Lindsay to kind of. And I want Lindsay to address.
I'd rather you not eat down here because I don't want to get bugs down here. Can you eat upstairs and then come down here and play?
Andrew.
She's sleeping. I'll, I'll be up as soon as my meeting's over. It's almost over. Okay.
Hey. All right. Anyway, I want Lindsay to talk about how we're going to handle the acquisition of the two service vehicles that we talked with each you about for EMS.
Okay. Tom is right. Lauren sent you.
Thank you, Russ. I'll turn the mic on. So Tom is right. Lauren sent you actually an extensive email yesterday that outlined the details on all of the transfers that are occurring in OP and Q. And so I'll talk through just some highlights on a few of those because I want to make sure you're aware of what we're proposing. And then I'll get into the details on the EMS vehicles. So on this list, you'll see, we actually have quite a few. We've got 18 that we are proposing through OP and Q. The top two related to the sheriff's office are related to just some equipment that they need. We don't want it to come out of the operating budget. There is an opportunity with the expanded uses of the technology and equipment reserve fund to take some of those pressures off. This would have to come out of their operating budget instead. So that's about $425,000 that will come out of their 2023 budget. Then Technology Review Board has a number of projects as well as IT where projects were delayed for certain reasons that were planned for. And so this simply moves those funds out of the 2023 budget and puts them into this technology equipment reserve fund so that those funds can be accessed. Otherwise, if we were to delay those projects, we would have to pay for it out of their operating budget next year. And obviously that is not something we would like to do at this late stage in that game. Getting to EMS then, what you'll see is there's a row for ambulances for a little over a million dollars. And then there is a row that says consolidated fund balance transfer. So I just want to remind you all that in 2022, we took the EMS tax fund, the com care tax fund, and the Noxious Weeds tax fund and moved them all into the general fund. Since that time, revenue has come in from prior tax bills. There have been other things that have happened to, to leave a fund balance there. So what this transfer would do is take the money out of those funds, put it into the general fund. And then we're essentially taking those dollars and putting them into an equipment reserve. Those dollars are restricted to the use for which they were originally generated. So we can't use com care tax fund dollars to support EMS. We can't use EMS tax fund dollars to support M, A, B, C, D, and so on and so forth. So we're putting those dollars into separate fund centers so that those dollars could be used to support those projects long term. And we don't have the confusion of trying to tell you what's restricted in the general fund from the rest of operations. So we're doing this for simplification of that. Now, on the EMS ambulances, that was something that we had talked about a while back. So a portion of the EMS fund balance is being used to support those ambulances. Now, that still leaves on this chart, 3.17 million that's being moved into that equipment and technology reserve fund. And that's what Tom was referencing before. At any point in time, because this is technically considered an unbudgeted fund at the state level, the commission can authorize budget authority at any time. So our plan would be to come back to you in a week or two and establish budget authority for that EMS portion for those staff vehicles. We would still have to go through the charter. So you'd still can't see it come up through bid board and all of that. But we would actually establish the budget authority to allow them to move forward. So there's no time restriction on that like there might be on other parts of our budget. So moving past that, then you'll see M, A, B, C, D has a vehicle purchase that was already entered into. Again, if we didn't move it out of the general fund, it would hit their operating budget next year. Regional forensic science center has been working for several years to put together an equipment replacement plan. We know how expensive their mass spectrometers and things are. And so they take budget authority that is unspent within their current year budget and move that to the equipment reserve fund so that they have a pot of money that they can then draw on in future years when they need to make replacements. The big one that I want to talk to you about, that I want to highlight for your attention is the economic development contingency row in your sheet. And it basically describes it as initial unallocated reserve funding. So Commissioner Howell has rightfully talked about how we had a very successful bill that went through this last year that changed again, the way we can do our equipment reserve. We can now use it for cloud software. We can use it for any number of things. And so what we want to do, because we have one-time investment income and we have excess budget authority between the economic development program and the general fund and residual budget authority remaining in contingencies, is we want to take 3 million out of the general fund, spend it from a general fund and put it in to the technology and equipment reserve fund so that we have a pot of money to work from going forward. And what we would look to do is each year, at the end of year, depending on our financial performance, we would look to add funds there because that will eventually take pressure off of our operating budget. So that's a really big one. It's a big expense, but I want you to know why we're proposing that and letting you know now. There is no allocation for that. We will have to come back to you to allocate those funds. Fleet management, the exact same thing for vehicle purchase. We had put in some orders. We're not going to receive those. So we're looking to move 2.2 million over for that. M, A, B, C, D has their own brand new sparkly fund that's going to allow us to be much more transparent. Instead of having it live in the general fund. So we're going to move those dollars over right now. That is at one, 8.15 million is the cash balance that's available for M, A, B, C, D. So we're moving every penny of that out of the general fund and into this new fund so that they can begin using that in 2024. Highways, we had a project that ran over several years ago. We need to correct that specific project. So we're moving about $16,000 over of cash to support that. So those are the transfers that you will see in OP and Q. And we've also got M and N, which are just some good news and bad news. We've had more sales tax come in than we planned on. And so we have to do by that ballot measure. We have to move half of the sales tax receipts into the sales tax, local sales tax fund for public works. We need to move budget authority there to allow that transfer to happen. That's about 330,000. And then in item N, there's a $625,000 up to amount that would allow us to balance our risk management fund. As you remember, our premiums have gone up and so we need to move some money there. So. A lot of money movement here. This will all affect the 2023 budget. It will not affect 2024. This is just cleanup for that final year. So what that means is in your monthly report, you won't see these expenses, but in your quarterly report you will. So there will be some discrepancies there too. So sorry, I tried to stay high level, but this is a lot of money and I didn't want to.
What does that leave us in general fund?
So what we are expecting to see is with this, we still think we will see a $2.5 million surplus in the general fund. But again, a lot of that is investment income that we want to treat as one-time money. I'd board you to tears.
Only, I want to, my question, when I look to, I look at budget books from year to year, there's going to be almost an asterisk note. It says, this number changed because of this large transfer.
Right.
There needs to be something added to the budget book somewhere so I can remind myself in the future what we did here, because this is going to be a bump in our trend lines to.
It will.
Deal.
But the good news is most of this will happen in areas where it's already going to catch your attention anyway. It'll be in a technology review board fund center. It'll be in this sales tax fund center. So there'll be ways that I think just by default, you will know. But for those more nuanced areas, yes, we'll make sure to add some notes so you can.
For the M, A, B, C, D funds, is that going to be a, almost like a third set of books to handle? I mean, you have fire district budget, you have general county budget. This M, A, B, C, D is, is within our county budget, but it's, it's almost a separate set of numbers. So.
It, it is a separate set of numbers in the same way. I'm going to pick on auto license fund. That fund only receives auto license monies and only spends dollars on auto license expenses. We will treat M, A, B, C, D in the same way. And so when you look at your monthly report or your quarterly report, and we have all of those individual budgetary account pages for a specific fund, this will now have that. So it's not, it's separate legal entity by any means. It's a special revenue fund. But this way we can clearly and easily show what the activity is that's happening there without any of the other confusion of what else is happening in the general.
And just for everyone's enjoyment, this is a result of legislative activity. Again, we worked to make this happen. It was something that shouldn't have happened a long time ago. It's taken us a couple of years to get this point across. There was a lot of people in Topeka nervous about this, but it makes perfect sense in terms of accountability. It helps us to manage our, our budgets more transparency with more transparency, more accountability. Just, it's, it's right thing to do. This is really a very good move.
It is. It's very exciting for us to get to this point.
You said there's about 8 million in that M, A, B, C, D fund?
That's the fund balance today.
Is that about where it's going to stay? Or that sounds like a lot of money sitting in that fund.
Well, so that will actually fund their operating budget for next year, any future equipment, any of those things. So to the extent that M, A, B, C, D does not spend as much as it brings in, it will be a cushion for them. Most of the time in most years, M, A, B, C, D will bring in more than they spend. And that's why they've regulated those fees and they've had that reduction for some time because they haven't needed to access that many dollars. But because M, A, B, C, D now is going to become its own thing. Every software acquisition we ever do, every equipment replacement we ever do, if we want to replace or add vehicles or anything like that, will have to come out of that pot of money. So it is.
Vehicle that's on the agenda, that's. That's part of it. That comes out of that fund.
Well, it's actually coming out of the general fund this year because the order was made in 2023. But yes, going forward, that would be something that happens out of an M, A, B, C, D. Yes, those are M, A, B, C, D revenue dollars that lived in the general fund, which is why it has been so confusing for the last 10 years. Now they will have their own fund where all of the activity happens just in that fund. And so we can easily report out to you the fund balance. We can usually report out to the builders or the city, the fund balance. And then there can be those constant conversations and that transparency that's much easier to.
So they were sitting in that rust bucket that sits over by Reagan building because it's an embarrassment every time I drive over there.
Rusty.
Not sure if that's a city owner, a county owned. It's the rust bucket, but.
I don't know. I hate seeing, I'm sure there's a Sedgwick County logo inside. And whenever I go by it and see that Sedgwick County logo on something, it's a rust bucket. It's embarrassing.
We will, we will check into it.
I don't see Chris here. The only other thing on the 8 million that I would comment on, at some point, there may be a software change in M, A, B, C, D, and that's very expensive. So that kind of cushion will allow for that to happen. It's probably in the next three or four years without Chris here. I don't know. But and then I'll have him account for his rust bucket too.
I think we'll see a decision.
I want to just send the rust bucket for just a second here. That's item of pride. Okay. I think it's wonderful. It's great image. We wear stuff out. That's my opinion. Do not change it just as he thinks. I disagree. I vote no. Thank you. I'm trying as you want.
I think we'll probably see a decision package for software in 2025 budget process. And that'll be an expensive upgrade and.
Millions. Yeah. That, any other questions? If not, that's pretty much all the consent items. We have a plat on item R and then general bill registers on S and T. And then comes second new business, which Justin has already covered. We'll do chairman first and then vice chair. And that is it for the main agenda. On fire agenda, it's a single item. It's bid board. And I think it's one command vehicle, which is why we have a fire board. So.
I assume the chairman will put the fire agenda right before new business part two. His. And then we have, generally we have. No, I, I know it's in the, it's actually in the agenda here on the chairman's award. Chairman's award is item D. Generally, there are some other comments. I know the chairman typically gets a little something from. Vice chair. Where does that happen in there? Does that happen during others? Does it happen earlier in the?
Um, well, let me think on that historically. It, it seems like that happens under the new business item of. But that's a good question. I know what you mean.
Please direct me on that. So we know where to, where to insert that opportunity. And it's technically going to be on the agenda because it's simply a quite a personal privilege, but. I do need to know when it's appropriate to do.
It might make sense to do that just as a trailer to item D. And then we go through the rest of business and then we elect new. But okay, I, but I know what you mean. We'll get clarity on that.
Either at the item, at the end of item B or it's, or it's before the first item under new business.
The new.
Yeah, I agree.
One of the two. So we'll figure it out.
All right. Thank you.
All right. That's all we have.
I don't have anything else. Commissioners, Commissioner Lopez, anything you want to? She's still on?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Beatty.
We're good.
All right. It was just, I was saying, we had a pretty good, you know, interface with our legislators yesterday afternoon. That was, I think, well done and. I had a great conversations about legislation, what we need. So I thought overall, what. uh, had a great conversations about legislation, uh, what we need. So I thought overall went pretty well. Yeah.
Again, we've got crews out right now from the county out and running, uh, make sure you keep them safe and tell them thank you for their work. Cause they're working 12 hours and 12 hours right now. So thanks for your work.
Thank you so much. All right. Well, everyone, thank you for the time and we'll be adjourned.